I'm showing six o'clock with the, I'd like to call this a meeting to order discussion regarding a proposed 2013, 2014 budget. Does somebody move we accept the agenda? Have a motion to approve, or have a second? Have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six and zero. Before we get started, I want to make a semi-announcement. I'm just going to read it to you. We got a message today from Charles Reddick, who is the Chief Appraiser. And he indicated that the Board of Assessors approved the 2013 Real Estate Digest this morning, which is today. The notices of value will be mailed Friday, April 26, 2013. At this point, the gross real estate digest is up 0.84 percent. And that is without deductions for exemptions. This does not include personal property, motor vehicle, or utilities. A more exact number includes these types of property will be available in mid-May. Chief Appraiser Charles Reddick. So basically, we are approving a budget that would be very similar, the same as last year. So having said that, I would like to turn the floor over to Fred Alata, the County Manager, for continuation of the budget.
Good evening, Your Honors. I'm not going to bore you with a bunch of schedules tonight. You had your notebooks from last time. We've had some discussions since then, trying to clarify some items and letting you find different items you were looking for. I do have two schedules that I will present here. In the last meeting, I chicken-scratched some things, trying to explain and answer to a question that was asked about this year's budget. Hopefully, this will be clearer in the process of explaining it. Our last year's budget was 116,993. And I'm using revenues here, but obviously, we have a balanced budget. And the expenses, corresponding expenses would be the same identical figure. My point is that what I'm showing here is that the budget was 116,993. Within the budget, we were going to use $831,000 of fund balance. I'm calling this actual revenue collections, i.e., not fund balance, stuff that we would bring in, in sales tax, property tax, and everything else, of 116,161,140. I'm taking it over to the FY14 for next year's budget and saying, that's my starting point. We are going to add net budgeted revenue increase, and I say net because we have some increases and some decreases. You'll note that it says Note 1, and down below in Note 1, I just took a couple of items off of the previous schedule I gave you at the last meeting. Major increases, 570,000 increase projected in sales tax, 412,000 increase in insurance premiums, and 345,000 in probate court. The total of those three items alone in increase is 1,327,000. Major decrease, I just showed one, that's 443,000. That was the crossing guards that we budgeted last year and didn't collect, and this year we're not budgeting for 443. The net of that is somewhere under 900,000. I didn't go ahead and list everything and try to make up, it'd be a long, long list. But that approximates closely the 921. Those major items make up most of the 921 net increase in revenues that we expect. That will give us a total budgeted revenue collections of 117,083. Then we added to the budget one-time revenues requiring added expenses. You have the Elmid grant for 1,403 in revenue, the CTP grant for 525,000, and the GIS reimbursement of 50,000. These again are one-time in this year's budget, and they total approximately $2 million. That would now take the revenues before use of fund balance up to 119 million. The added fund balance, to make it a balanced budget, is $3,016,000. The total budgeted revenues are 122,077. In the last meeting, the revenue was under that figure, just slightly by $126,000. We made a couple of adjustments to the budget, or I think, three items. One of them, we had the police uniforms in a Priority Two, and we took out the Priority One, so they had nothing in their budget. So we added 42,000, which is a normal amount that they do have in their budget each year. And with the Priority Two, if it did, we'd take the 42 out and put the other figure in. There was, the calculation on the group insurance was 1,889. And for presentation, there was 1,800 even, so the extra 89,000 was added back in. And there was a slight decrease of 5,000, so the net of that's 126, which would increase the fund balance that we had originally of 2,883. And it would also increase the 121,9 budget by the 126,000. So the increase in the budget of that amount, and those net expenditures increased the budget, but also increased the use of funds. Any questions on that? The second schedule I gave each of you was, a question came regarding the employee bonus figure that was in there for 1,251. Chairman's desire was that we try to net the employees to a $600 paycheck. And to do such, if we started with a one-time wage bonus of $714, the Social Security and Medicare is 7.65. Both the county and the employee have to pay that. Ours would be a plus to our expense, theirs would be a negative to their paycheck. The pension, the county puts in 8.8 percent, so we'd have another expense of $62. The employees pay 6 percent, that's 42, which would be reduced in their check. County pays, and this is a weighted average of all workman's comp rates, some are higher, some are lower. Admin is cheaper, and of course, field, out of the field people, laborers and stuff pay a higher percent of workman's comp. Just the ballpark of 2.37 percent. That would be an expense of $16.95 on the $714. Cost per employee to the county is $848.40. 1,475 employees approximately would be covered. That gets you to the cost in your budget within $2 of 1,251,395. On the other side, adding one other item, which is the state tax, Georgia State Tax of 6 percent of another $42, the net check at that point before federal taxes, which we all know that figure could be zero, and it could be a whole bunch, you know, a whole bunch, if you would, based on the number of deductions and so on, some would have. So the net check before federal taxes would be $573.70 on the $714. But again, the counties, as you can see, between the three other items, the three benefit costs that would come with it, two of which the employee's sharing, and one, the workman's comp they do not, would end up with the number of employees at the 1,251 figure for that What I'd like to do at this point is have Mike Gaffes come up here, and he has someone with him, and he'll discuss a wellness program for the insurance program. And if Mike, if you could please come up and just, Mike will explain how he got to where he's at, and tonight, bringing somebody here to explain it. And at the same time, then that'll be followed by a brief presentation of what wellness is, what a wellness program is, excuse me.
Gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to come tonight. Fred asked me to research wellness programs, and I'm glad he did, because I learned a lot going through this research. As I didn't know, wellness companies have been around for over 20 years, but right now, it's getting real hot with startup companies. So in meeting with people from the different wellness companies, we had to go through and find out which ones were just startups. Some of them offer one thing, and then they partner with another company, and one of them will do one thing, one will do another part. So we're looking for a company that did it all, looking for a company with a track record. And that's who I have here tonight. Still meeting with companies and talking to them, because like I said, it's a learning process. It's very involved. The first handout I gave you to show you how involved it is and how hot it is right now is was in yesterday's Sunday paper. A few things that I've highlighted, they say 12,000 per employee per year is what some companies are spending on health insurance. CVS has been in the paper a while for what they have done. They charge an extra for health insurance if you don't participate in a wellness program. Two very interesting ones, one was Michelin of North America, they measure the waistlines. If you're over a certain size, you pay extra. And Honeywell International has a $1,000 penalty if you have replacement or back surgery or joint surgery without first going through alternative treatments, which would consist of wellness and so forth. They're recommending wellness for everybody, and we've been lucky holding our health insurance rates down. We do have another increase this year, but HR Department of Henry County, your department did a study last year and updated in October, showing that our rates are as low, and mostly 30 percent or more lower than the metropolitan area, other cities and counties. So we've been good, we've done good, we have the rates down. But to keep them down, you know, you can't keep raising deductibles, raising copays, raising premiums. That's a never-ending thing. You hit it head-on with a wellness program, then you'll get everybody's health better, and in turn, it should pay off with lower premiums. So with that being said, Brittany Mutton is here tonight from On-Site Health Solutions. This company was started in 1993, so they've been doing this for over 20 years. They've been doing this 20 years. They do it all, they don't merge and partner out with anybody. One person owns it, he still owns it. They have a good track record with 200 clients in 25 states. So with that being said, I'm going to ask Brittany to please come up. She's going to briefly go through what they do and how they do it.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. As Mike said, my name is Brittany Mutton. I am with On-Site Health Solutions, and we're actually located in Prospect, Kentucky, which is a suburb of Louisville. We've been doing business since 1993. So just a little bit of background on our company, is the owner of our company started off as a byproduct with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield in Kentucky, where he actually would go onsite and do wellness assessment and biometric testing for different companies. And companies started to get smart, and they didn't really want their insurance carrier having access to this information, which allows someone like us to exist, a third-party wellness vendor, and that's truly what we are. So we would be here to work for you, and we don't work for the insurance company, we don't have a direct relationship with the hospital system or a certain carrier. And again, this is what we specialize in, is onsite biometric screenings and designing a good strategy to target your high-risk individuals with health risk, and intervention strategies to get those high-risk individuals healthier by making them aware. So I don't have a lot of time, but I'm going to take you through just a little bit what our program's about, and the packet that you have in front of you sums up pretty much everything. Mike does have my business card, so any questions, please don't hesitate.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You said you were a third-party. How are you compensated? Are you compensated by the, would you be compensated by the company or the county?
Exactly. We've always been a third-party, where it's a client pay. And we do do some billing with insurance companies now, because we do have an MD on staff, but mostly, it's client pay.
So this would be another expense for our employees if we had decided to bring you onboard?
And I'll talk you through some of the strategies that a lot of our clients use. We do recommend offering a wellness and a non-wellness rate. As Mike said, it's not just enough to keep raising deductibles, especially on the healthy people that are taking care of themselves. You know, eventually, you want to get to a strategy, and I brought a three-year strategy with me that will target outcomes, similar to what CVS is doing, but we're not so aggressive in that manner. We believe this is a gradual process that starts off with a Know Your Numbers campaign, and to be transparent with the employees on where you want to go as an employer for them on wellness. So again, this would be an incentive or a penalty to their insurance premium if they don't choose to participate and engage in the wellness. About 75 percent of lifestyle choices account for employer healthcare costs, or lifestyle choices account for about 75 percent of employer healthcare costs. So a lot of these can be prevented. We aren't here to find necessarily a cancer, sometimes we do. It's all prevention-based, lifestyle choices, weight management, blood pressure control, cholesterol control. Those are our main areas of focus that we see drive healthcare cost. This is also, should be looked at as a benefit for the employees if you choose to go with the wellness route, because it is another benefit that you're offering. So this is not meant to be, you know, replaced as an annual with their doctor, but just another benefit that you're offering as their employer. We have many services, as Mike explained. We don't just stop at the biometric screenings, we offer engagements. We also offer resources to help you, at some point, maybe establish an onsite clinic. We have a lot of our groups now that are going to putting an onsite clinic to help control costs, where a nurse practitioner, MD is onsite, the employees and the spouses and the family members can utilize that clinic, and you're paying those MDs at an hourly rate versus them going and running it through their claims with the insurance carrier. You look at the second page of the packet, it all starts with a health risk assessment. This is predictive modeling. We want to know everything we can know as far as prevention and preventing diseases, as far as stress, eating habits, nutrition, and that's done through a health risk assessment. So all employees would fill out a health risk assessment. It's about 75 questions, very easy to fill out, takes about 20 minutes. Then it's followed up by biometric screening days. My staff would come onsite for all of your different shifts. It would probably be over a two- or three-week timeframe, where we would have to do biometric screening days. The employees would come on, we would take care of their height, their weight, their BMI, doing a blood draw to check cholesterol, HDL, which is the good, LDL, the bad, triglycerides, and blood sugar. Followed by that, we have health engagement, education, we have online resources, we have health coaching, which we think is a great tool as far as a teachable moment, to make sure the employees understand the results that they just received. We do mail these results to the employees' home, so they do receive that in the mail and for confidentiality and privacy. We won't share any of their information, any of their individual information. They become a number and a statistic and an aggregate report that I would come back and present to you, so that you know what the employees look like as a whole. Also comes with benefit, design plan. I am a client advisor, I've been with the company going on eight years, so my goal is to make sure that you have a program designed. Over our 200 clients, not one of our groups have the exact same wellness program. And I hate to use the word "program," because really, what this is a culture change, and so I'm here to help you design to change your culture and help create a healthier culture. The next page, this is an example of a three-year wellness strategy. We believe that instead of coming in and just saying what we want to do to get your employees healthy for one year, we want a three-year strategy always ahead of us. And it's also transparent for the employees, so that they know where you want to go. A lot of groups look at a year-one plan as a get-to-know-your-numbers, go through the screening, become aware of any health risk you may have. And that first and second year, turning that into activity-based, having activities that are driven by the wellness committee to engage the employees, changing culture habits as far as what type of foods we're bringing to meetings and things of that nature. Year three is what a lot of groups are going, and even into year four, what we call outcome-based. Employees' premiums would be directly affected on that third year, based on how healthy they are, but with reasonable accommodations. So by law, we have to follow those reasonable accommodations, that I can't penalize someone for having a genetic disorder. We have to provide accommodations for them to get to that best rate if they engage in healthy activities. The next slide, just to show you some more engagement that we have, we do have what we call an active health program. It's a pedometer program, but just to know, these are available to the employees if they want to purchase them, or if you wanted to purchase them, they could also be purchased as incentives. But to know that we have all of this information, you don't have to go to another vendor and search for this type of activity and tracking, we do all that for you. The next slide, under Total Health Management, this is an example, and I also left a couple copies back that you can look through, of examples of different city and counties implementing an onsite clinic, like I spoke about. This particular one, we partnered with a MD and a nurse practitioner in Louisville. It's basically putting a medical home into your company. We designed a program that works for you. What most of our groups are doing with these medical homes are they're staffing a nurse practitioner and assistant, part-time, so the employees can go see them, they can get prescriptions such as Z-Packs, blood pressure prescriptions, things like that. Some stats that I just got is this particular company that I'm referencing just received their renewal. The clinic costs them, after all supplies, paying the nurse practitioner, the assistant part-time, about $14,500 per month. In one year, implementing this medical home onsite clinic, their medical costs are down 13 percent. So the employees are driven into this medical home to go to the nurse practitioner for the sinus infections, the sore throats, any sort of thing that can be treated by a nurse practitioner, as they can write prescriptions. So if that's something that you want to do, we think for an employer your size, it's a logical step in the second or third year of a wellness program, and we would help you by working with facilities around the area, Piedmont's, design this for you, and potentially, this could be some true cost savings to the county. The next page, again, just kind of takes steps. It's good to have the third-party, like myself, in there. We can collect all the biometrics and be able to provide this to your medical home, so that when your employee walks into that onsite clinic for the first time, that nurse practitioner has some health information on that employee, based on what we collected in the biometric screenings. We do have a lot of frequently asked questions, so we're here to make sure that your employees would feel comfortable when they come through this assessment, if it's something that you choose to do, that they know who we are. We have to protect their information at all costs, so we have to remain compliant with HIPAA, just like a doctor's office would. And so we just take the employees through all the frequently asked questions. The very back page looks at cost. Year one, as I spoke about, is truly a Know Your Numbers program, looking at voluntary participation, incentivizing by charging that wellness and non-wellness rate. We see about $40 per month, per employee, single, or $80 for employee, per spouse, will yield about 75 or 80 percent participation. So this still is a voluntary program, the employee would just have to choose whether they want the wellness rate or the non-wellness rate. The first year, to get that best rate, it would simply be going through the assessment and doing a few engagements. You kind of see going through that first six months, we've broken it up into a six-month process, where the first six months, we do a health risk assessment, we do the biometrics, the employees get a report mailed to their home, the company gets an aggregate report. We mail reports to their doctors if they give us consent. So if we have new blood work done, and the employee would like us to mail their results to their physician. Our quarterly health webinar is driven by our registered dietitian, that we can make available multiple occasions throughout the quarter. They have an 800 number to ask questions and talk to a health coach. And then we also contact any high-risk participants, so we look at certain health criteria, for example, cholesterol being over 240, we make an outbound call to refer them back into their physician. The next six months, we would propose to have the wellness coordinator, which would be myself, really start engaging the employees, doing biweekly health emails to all participants, working with the wellness committee, doing health challenges based on the aggregate report. We want to impact the greatest number of the employees that have the health risks. So nutrition and exercise will be number one, as we see that with all of our groups, and working with challenges in the committee to give those, make those available to the employees. And then work within the area of colleges, we've kind of run this by and talked through this, about what we're doing with other groups, is there are plenty of fitness interns and health interns at the local colleges that we can utilize for an intern program that can come and assist and maybe do some onsite stuff here with the employees at no cost, as this could be counted as an internship for them. The second year, I won't go through all that pricing, you can see it, but again, like I spoke about, it's an activity-based, so it's not just enough to go through the program to receive that incentive to get that, to pay that non-wellness rate or wellness rate. They have to engage in some things throughout the year that we will track for them. Year three is when we typically look to the outcome-based programs, where you're giving discounts for healthy behavior, such as having good blood pressure, taking their medications, and being compliant with cholesterol, and being within their recommended weight range.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, if you have a question.
Can I clarify something for?
Yeah, I have a few questions for Brittany, too.
Okay.
She can come up to that side as well.
Okay, come on, let me go one. Commissioner Holmes mentioned the cost. Like she said, this is directly between the county.
I want to come back to the cost. But I did mention her say something about the county saving money, and I do believe we will save money if we increase premiums on the employees. However, I think we have a responsibility to our employees, so that's definitely something that I'm not going to be in support of. With that being said, the question that I have is, based on the number of employees that we have in the potential pool, what would be the cost of employee, cost per employee for this particular program?
For the biometric piece, it's $65 per employee, and then when you tie on the engagements, we charge $15 per employee for the biweekly, or the bi-monthly emails, the work with the wellness committee, working with the local college. And so it's really just kind of a two-part, 65 and 15.
Is that a month or a per check?
One time per year, per employee. That participates, so it's not for each employee on your health plan, it's the ones that choose to participate. So you do want to keep in mind, I think Mike's going to talk you through this, that you are collecting a higher premium on those that choose not to participate.
And I want to ask.
By the way, I also agree with Commissioner Holmes, that we don't want to raise things too much on our employees, especially since we haven't given pay raises, but this is a voluntary increase. Only if you don't become actively engaged in your healthcare, do you pay this penalty.
Correct.
If you want to sign up for the wellness, you pay exactly, assuming however it gets structured, you pay exactly what you would have been paying.
Yes.
Now, you had mentioned if we do the onsite clinic, that one of your participants has lowered by 13 percent. Now, on our, our insurance is getting close to $13 million a year. So if we had a 13 percent reduction, that's the equivalent of between $1.5 to $2 million in savings for a $168,000 investment. What is the lowering just by having a wellness plan? Do y'all have a percentage of how much the loss percentages go down or so forth on, for your company?
Yeah, we see is, just by offering the screenings, that you will see some, not really reduction. If I sit here in front of you and said that you're going to get a decrease, then I'd be lying. It's stabilization. But what we are seeing with onsite clinics, that's a true healthcare saver, because the employees, you're paying hourly for those employees to be seen, and you're seeing, they're seeing multiple employees per hour versus that individual claim that's running through. What we do see with our typical screens, if you didn't do the onsite clinic, about a $4 to $5 return on every dollar you invest after about three years of doing the screening. So doing nothing, we know will yield nothing. So these screenings potentially, no doubt, will save a life here, as we make people that are diabetic aware of their diabetes before they even know it, because of a screening like this.
So we won't see savings, well, you're just looking at stabilizing premiums, correct?
And I think that you could, I mean, but if you went to the clinic, absolutely. If you went that route after the second or third year, absolutely. But to say that insurance carriers look at a wellness program and give a decrease, that's just not the case, but they do take it into consideration.
You are saving, because instead of getting a 12 or 14 percent rate increase in next year, your rates are stabilized. So you don't see anybody having level rates, they're all going up. So if you can stabilize the rates, you do have a savings.
With regards to what you just said, in terms of the possibility of rates increasing, as you know, with the healthcare law, the government exchange kicks in in January. You don't think the pressure by the government establishing insurance exchanges throughout the country, you don't think that's going to have any pressure on pricing with the private insurers?
Not that we see. I don't see it affecting what we do.
If we can get insurance cheaper through the government, you don't think Blue Cross or any of the- the country, don't think that's going to have any pressure on pricing with the private insurers?
Not that we see. I don't see it affecting what we do.
If we can get insurance cheaper through the government, you don't think Blue Cross or any of the other private insurance companies will come down on their rates?
The government's going to have to use Blue Cross or United or somebody to do it. They're not going to do it themselves, because they have got to go to Blue Cross and United and ask them to create an exchange. The government doesn't have an insurance company.
I have a question.
And Blue Cross is, excuse me, Blue Cross is the only one so far, I think, that has stepped up nationally to say they would do that. What the government's doing is, in your rate increase this year, two and a half to three percent of that is already from the new health catalog that you're going to pay to help give insurance for people that won't buy it.
That's because there's no competition, and the reason why the insurance company is gouging everybody is because they know the exchange is coming in in January, so they're trying to make all the money they can make. But when that exchange comes in, and there's competition from the government, lower price competition, you don't believe that the insurance companies are going to drop their premiums, or the premiums are going to stabilize?
They would be competing against themselves, because they're going to be the ones that create the exchanges. The government can't have a government exchange, because they're not in the insurance business. They have insurance companies that handle Medicaid and Medicare for them. So I can't answer what's going to happen when all this takes place. No, I don't know. I do know that the insurance companies are not jumping out there to create national exchanges. But on the cost side, we, and this is between the county and the wellness carriers, Fred asked me to research them. It's a direct contract between you and whichever carrier you pick. My involvement would be just to help HR and help employees. Let me make that clear. But we have the fifty thousand dollars that we can use to wellness. And I've done the numbers, and if you did say the rate stays the same, if you do wellness, but if you choose you don't want to do it, you're going to pay an extra forty dollars with the number of employees you have. That four hundred and eighty per year versus eighty dollars for what wellness cost means, that every person that doesn't do it pays for six that do it. That plus your fifty thousand dollars would pay for it. Now, again, I'm not here to sell you on wellness.
Well, I think...
Strictly, I'm not. Yes, sir.
I think she said, we won't see the true impact until our three years. So it wouldn't make any sense for us to even look at this right now, until we see what happens with the exchange in January.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. I don't know what the other...
And I don't want to get into a political discussion, but to this point, that the two to three years that the healthcare reform has occurred, has it increased or decreased?
You can read every day, and every publication we get, it's increasing rates.
That's what, I mean, there was just, I mean, the last time I was on the school board, and we had increases, a large, I mean, it was close to twenty percent of the premium increase was due to taking dependents under the age of twenty-four. I mean, they actually had it as part of the discussion. And I don't want to get into the politics of it. I'm just trying to figure out, because I pulled under Exhibit One, Mr. Gassis, when you put this all together, our loss ratios last year, for a total, were ninety-eight point eight, meaning that the insurance company paid out ninety-eight point eight percent of the premiums they took in for our coverage. And I'd seen previously, last year, I couldn't get the numbers for this year, we had certain employees that were going to the emergency room more than ten times, one single employee. A lot of this, as Brittany said, seventy-five percent of your healthcare cost is lifestyle. And I'm not talking about injuries, I'm not talking about sickness and illness. We want to take care of our employees as much as possible. But there's a reason most governments have taken on wellness plans. There's a reason that most private industries have taken on wellness, is because if you don't get your employees actively involved in their healthcare decisions, they won't get healthier. I mean, I will tell you right now, I'm a perfect example. I have to get brand-new buy-sell-life insurance for my company. You probably noticed it, I've lost about fifteen pounds in the last two or three months, because I knew I had to go get screened physically, and you want to get me excited about something, save me some money. And that's exactly what we're looking to do here, is save our employees. We have to, I'll go ahead and tell the employees, we can't continue to have fifteen percent price increases every year and absorb it forever. It looks like, because the chairman put this in the budget this year, that we're kind of put in a situation where we're going to do what we can for our employees, but we cannot continue to keep doing this. So we have to change the behavior of our employees where they have buy-in, so that we can figure out a way to make this work.
I agree with that.
And I think this is the first step.
Let me say something. Brian mentioned, you know, the high loss ratios. For the insurance company, that's terrible. They're not making as much money. Their spread is smaller. However, the higher the loss ratio, the greater for the patient, because that means most of the money is going towards patient care.
But you're only going to do that once, because they get you the next year, you have to renew your rates.
Like you said, the exchange is going to fix all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The subject that came up, and should come up, and per the last schedule I showed you, the use of fund balance last year for eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, and this year using over three million. I thought what I would do is try to clarify fund balance, if I can here. Let me show you from the audit, just a couple schedules here, to try to help clarify this. In business, or anybody who has a financial statement, background reviewed financials, you have a balance sheet and you have an income statement. In government, and in a balance sheet, it's assets, it's your liabilities. In business, the net is called your equity. In government, I'm just going to say it's called your fund balance. So let me just show you in 2011. You can see here that our balance sheet, and again, just looking at the general fund, forget all these other funds right now. In fact, I could probably do this. Might help. Our general fund, at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, okay, our assets, I'm here, were forty-six million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Our liabilities were ten million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. You'll notice that the cash and investments, which basically is another form of cash, those two figures will total over thirty-three million dollars. So of our forty-six million dollars in assets, thirty-three million of it was cash as June eleventh. What I called before the equity section in an income statement, or balance sheet for a business, basically the difference of the two figures I just showed you, of the forty-six and the tens, roughly thirty-six million dollars, as you can see. This is the fund balance here, and the fund balance is this thirty-six million dollars, which again, is a subtraction of the assets from liabilities, the forty-six assets to ten liabilities. You will see here, the unassigned general fund is thirty-one seven, and it is just that. That is the unassigned, that's your fund balance that is free to be used. The non-spendable up here is four million and seventy-one, and that comes from this figure here, advances to other funds. So that figure is directly off the asset, it's an asset that goes into this non-spendable, and the prepaid is three seventy-four, let's put these next to each other, is this three seventy-four, which is an asset. So those two come out, this twenty thousand dollars is not shown here, but it's a small figure. So the total of these four figures is the thirty-six million dollars, which is the difference between the forty-eight and the ten. So when we talk fund balance, that's where it comes from, and again, the thirty-one million is what we talk about as the fund balance, that is because it's unassigned. Now, if you'll notice, in two thousand and eleven, in June, at our audit, in our year-end, we had thirty-one million, seven hundred and fifty-six versus thirty-six total. When I go to the next year, which is last year's statement, we had forty-five million in assets and only eight million in liabilities. We paid our liabilities at the end of the year. The total cash up here was thirty million, seven, and the last, at June of eleven, as you recall, the cash was about thirty-three million of the assets. The fund balance, at the end of twelve, you will see, you'd almost think you're looking at the same statement I showed you previously, which was thirty-one million. This is the eleven on the top, and the twelve underneath, the elevens here, you will see that the fund balance stabilized. It didn't go up and didn't go down, as far as the unchanged. What did change is the overall fund balance, it went up, primarily because the advances to other funds went up by five, by a million dollars. So the fund balance itself did increase, but the unassigned, which is the figure we talk about as being available, is basically stabilized between eleven and twelve. So hopefully, that's an explanation of where that fund balance figure or discussion comes from. And again, you can see it's not all cash, it's your assets and liabilities, but in our case, our cash is pretty close, at the end of the year, to the net unassigned fund balance. Any questions on that? Just a couple of housekeeping items, and then I'll leave it open for discussion, or questions, or whatever you may have. The group insurance, as has been spoken, the expenses include absorption by the county of the full one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, as part of the budget, which I showed you last time. Blue Cross Blue Shield was the cheapest of all the competitive carriers that our broker went out and searched. It was a sixteen percent increase. I think the second highest, second lowest was eighteen and a half. And what we need to do, to get open enrollment done, is what we've got to do is come up with a number, finalization, if you would, so that on May seventh, a vote can be taken to accept Blue Cross Blue Shield, and at the same time, allow HR to discuss with the employees in open enrollment, what their premiums are going to be. We've got to get open enrollment done. We're actually pushing it by going in into May. Realize you can't make a decision tonight, but that is something that does have to get resolved. And then two other items, and that is, Angie and I, two items we brought up at the last meeting, that needs to be clarified, discussed, finalized, or whatever, and that is the date fund issue.
Before you, is a resolution dated December two thousand and eleven, and that resolution stated that the date funds would not be able to go below a million dollars. Based on the current...
It's right here. Again, you can see, this was done December fifth, two thousand and eleven.
And looking at the expenses for this current fiscal year that we're in, with all the mental health court, DUI court, and connecting Henry, you see their budgets here, and then we've had various vendor payments. We're going to go below this year of the million dollars, we'll go down to nine eighty-six, four-ten. For next fiscal year, two thousand and fourteen, the same three departments will take us down to eight hundred thousand dollars. So we need guidance to either bring back a resolution, reducing the million-dollar cap, or look for other funds to support these departments.
I have a question. What prompted the board in eleven to approve a resolution to put the cap or reserve at one million? I think it'd be good for us to know exactly what stimulated us, or what was the cause of having to adopt a resolution.
At the time, I believe it was the solicitor, Chuck Spahouse, came and stated that they would like to have the entire one point two million dollars. And we felt like, you know, that's pretty strong, that you're going to dog, because what's going to happen if you don't have any next year or the year after? It was told to the board at that time, that they could operate within the two hundred thousand plus what they had coming in in other areas, and that that would be all that they would need. And so at that time, the board said, well, if that's all that you need, it was over a million dollars in there, and we put it in there, we'll keep it at a million dollars. If it fluctuates a little in-between time, that's one thing, but now you're talking about going from a million down to eight hundred thousand, and then what's going to happen in a couple of years when it goes down again? When you run out of it, who's going to fund it? You know, that was, that was a thought of the board. You'd have a little flexibility, but we were told they wouldn't need any flexibility. They could operate within that confines of what they had at that time, and that's why the million dollars was put in play.
Let me ask you this. On a parliamentary procedure, in the event we did nothing, the resolution is still current, that would mandate a million-dollar reserve, so consequently, since it's dropped down, we will have to take steps now to eliminate something that would bring it back, eventually bring it back up to a million dollars. Now, having said that, we only got three entities that receive funding. One would be mental health court, which in this case is seventy-seven, nine sixty-three. The DUI court would be twenty-nine thousand and ninety, and connecting Henry would be seventy-one thousand, zero-three-zero.
Sir, that's for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. If you look down...
Well, I can't see the bottom. Is the bottom there eight, eight hundred and some odd thousand?
Okay, whoa, right there.
But, Your Honor, if you consider the figures that you did express, if any of those were, or some of those were reduced by fourteen thousand dollars, the ending balance that you presently see that's projected of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, with fourteen thousand dollar cut up here, would keep it at the million, which is, the first test that you've got is as of June thirtieth of this year. So you are faced with a fourteen thousand dollar projected deficit to the million-dollar resolution by the end of this year. And then, as you started to speak on the next part, which is the next year, that speaks to it, what you were going at.
Brittany, in your opinion, do you think any of these departments can be self-sustaining in the future?
Each one of them comes, came in with their budgets, and basically said this is what they need, based on their departments and staffing, and the revenues they have from other sources, and this is the need of their, to fulfill their department, to fulfill what the services they want to render. So I don't, not running those departments, but again, that's their projection of what they need from this fund, to go ahead and operate, if they're going to operate fully.
I think, in order to get it back up to a million dollars, we only got to go from nine eighty-six up. The eight hundred thousand would be projected at the end of a two thousand and fourteen balance, based on monies that they have asked for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. In order to do that, we would have to consider, lack of a word, eliminating some of the expense, or minimizing the expense that would bring it back up to a million. I agree with Commissioner Bowman, that once you drop it down to eight hundred thousand, then it becomes easier to drop it down to six hundred, then you drop it down to whatever. If the board at that time felt comfortable that a million dollars would be the reserve, then I, relying upon them, I think a million-dollar reserve would be a practical approach. And having said that, then if we do nothing, then the resolution still stands. And in order for it to become reality, we have to consider cutting some of the funds in all three, or eliminating one entirely. So that would be the board's determination. The process for elimination, I would suggest that we let the resolution stay intact. So if that's the case, then we obviously have to go back and redo the budget to bring it up to where at the end of two thousand and fourteen, we'll show a million-dollar-plus balance. So having said that, does anybody have any questions? So having said that, does anybody have any questions?
Angie, I see the, the revenue on two thousand and thirteen was twenty-three thousand five eighty-nine. What was the revenue down below, go below the nine eighty-six? Right below the nine, just lift, they made it so big that you can't see the numbers below the nine eighty. No, go, I see, that's the twenty-three five eighty-nine, but then what's the number below nine eighty-six for the projected revenue for next year?
Oh, ninety thousand for budget and revenues for two thousand and fourteen.
I'm just trying, because I, you know, you add up the expenses, the seventy-seven nine sixty-three, the twenty-nine ninety, the seventy-one thirty, that totals approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. You total up the ones down below, the one thirty-four, two seventy-five, fifty-nine, six ninety-five, and eighty-one, six fourteen, that's two seventy-six.
Yes.
I mean, this thing's getting bigger.
It is.
Yes, sir.
That's why the expenditures are getting bigger and the amount grows up.
And their revenue is getting smaller. To, to clarify and possibly, the twenty-three thousand, if you'll notice, from April to June, projected to complete the year, the balance that you see up here starts at March thirty-first. This is a schedule you should have from last time. Basically, through March, we've collected forty-seven thousand dollars from last July to March of this year.
So you had forty-seven plus, what was the number on the other leg?
Twenty-three.
Forty-sevens already included in here?
Yeah.
Well, why don't we, since time is not a vest, why don't we just move on? And we'll put an asterisk by that, and we definitely have to address it. Would that serve the wishes of the, of the board? Because I don't think we're going to be able to digest it in order to, to move on in this meeting. I, I don't see any opposition, so the chair determines we need to move on.
Two other items, and one is, Angie covered one, and I'll cover, a couple of items that, the priority twos that were there, the one specific priority two that I mentioned, we talked last time, is that the fire department has nineteen thousand dollars in there for their mileage program, reimbursement of mileage between stations on a day-to-day basis with firefighters who are assigned to a station. We explained it last time. There's many, many, many items, as you know, in the priority twos. That's something that we do need some direction on, and it would be an increase to the budget by nineteen thousand dollars, and the need to know on that or any other priority twos that are there, not singling, I did single one out, but that one in particular is a policy to cover, if you would, costs that our firefighters are incurring to move station to station, putting that in, having funds to, to fund it, which we don't this year and have not in the past. The other items in there, if you have questions on other priority twos. But what goes into the next point, and I'll let Angie cover, and that is dates, as far as what we need to have when, and I'll let Angie.
Are you talking about the expenditure now for the mileage? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is, what I want to do is, what I was talking about is, whatever we're going to do, the importance is to come up with a number for the budget, which Angie will explain from a date standpoint, those, the dates that we've got to do certain things to have a number by, the details of which we can work out, but from a budget standpoint and a gross dollar budget, of course, balanced as it is, these are the dates that are critical that need to be met.
I thought prior to that, you were talking about nineteen thousand dollars in the, in the budget for?
It is not presently, it's in the priority two, so it is not in the hundred and twenty-two million dollar figure I showed originally, so.
That's reimbursement for the mileage?
Yes, sir.
For the fireman?
Yes, sir, and it is not.
So you're looking for guidance?
Yes, guidance on that, and if you did, we would have to increase the hundred and twenty-two million figure.
Okay, so we need to resolve, basically resolve that issue before we move to the date, right?
Yes, but the reason is, is that we need, at the May seventh meeting, and I'm getting, I'm letting Angie cover, but by seventh meeting, she'll explain what, what happens there.
Well, let me, let me share my thoughts about that. Back in oh seven, or oh eight or oh nine, when gas was a dollar and eighty-nine cents a gallon, the firemen didn't have a problem showing up at their assigned station, and then somebody sicked out at another station so they would assign them. That was when gas was probably a dollar and seventy, eighty cents a gallon. Now, gas is a minimum of three twenty-six today, it had been almost to four dollars. So we, we've had, we've had firemen leave, so we're having less, that means that more are having to be transferred. And just from my thoughts, I think it's only fair and equitable to, to allocate and to budget that amount to be used for the employees that come in to the workstation and transferred to somebody else, and that's my thoughts. I would like to see that as a tier one responsibility, and I think it's only a fair thing to do at this moment, so.
I just have one question. Are there any unintended consequences? I mean, if we do this, is it, is this, is this a ripple effect that if we make, because how much are we talking about here? Nineteen thousand?
Nineteen thousand. The estimate at this point, it's, it's a little rub, it's based on Chief Lacy's here, but we, number of people they feel that are being transferred today between stations by approximately eight to ten miles per drive, if you would, and a return, that times the, I think the rate's fifty-six plus cents now a mile.
Are there any other departments, though, that this, because we set the precedent changing it here for nineteen thousand, which is understandable and reasonable, but there's another department that maybe next year comes back at a hundred thousand because they, they want the same policy?
I'm not aware of any other department that's, that's expressed that their employees are coming to work and having to go to another station and so on.
This is only if they take the POV, private vehicle. I mean, that's, I just want to say that, that's pretty obvious. But I would like to see that at tier one, so that's, that's just my thoughts. So looking for guidance, I'd rather see it in a tier one than a tier two.
Yes, sir.
So I don't, it doesn't appear there's any opposition, so we might put that in a tier one, and we, we still got a lot of tweaking to do with the budget, but we are eventually knowing on it. So now, we can get back to the budget calendar.
Speaking of tweaking, we do need guidance, thank you for that guidance on the nineteen thousand. We'll also need guidance on the date funds. The advertisement for the public hearing will be April the twenty-sixth, which will be Friday. I have to have the balanced budget and the notification touche by Wednesday. The public hearing will be May the seventh. At that point, I can lower the budget, but I cannot increase the budget, or we will have to have another public hearing and a call meeting for adoption.
You can lower it, but you can't add to it?
Yes.
So when, when do you suggest, what would be the last opportunity that the budget has to be balanced by April the twenty-sixth?
And today, the budget is balanced, with the exception of the nineteen thousand we just added back in.
Okay.
Which will increase fund balance.
Okay. So basically, you're going to balance the budget based on fund balance, we have to. You're going to balance it at a hundred and twenty-two million plus, in this case here, maybe nineteen thousand. You would advertise it as a balanced budget.
Yes.
April the twenty-sixth, and then it, it could, it could change up or down, but once we have the public hearing and take public comments, on the seventh, if it goes up, then we got to reschedule and have another, maybe back-to-back public hearing. If it goes up, if it comes down, then obviously we can move on and, and hit the numbers on the date.
I have ten days in between when I advertise to when we have the public hearing, so keep that in mind.
Okay, so April the twenty-sixth and May the seventh is going to get that requirement.
Yes.
Now, in the event, the May seventh, we, the board determines to up the budget, that means we got to have another public hearing, and how much timeframe we need between May seventh and May tenth? Will you publish a notice of adoption?
We would publish it that Friday, and have the public hearing on May twenty-first, and then we would have to have a call meeting for the adoption of the budget.
Okay, so everything would move, move forward, but that's, that's okay, we just have to republish it in the paper.
And remember, it has to be adopted by May thirty-first.
Okay. Anybody have any question surrounding that issue, the dates, the town? Okay.
The guidance on the date funds, do you, would you, do you want me to call the departments back in with the budget committee and meet with them and see what they can do to either lower their budget or find grants, or do you want us to bring the resolution back changing the cap?
I, I would ask the, just for clarification, is go back to the departments.
Okay.
On the one is, is, I, I met with all of them except two, and I'm satisfied and I'm convinced that it's probably the bare minimum now, and I, I don't know if, if they found something other than necessities, it would be a bare minimal, but I would definitely like for you to explore the possibility of letting them review the grants that may be available for their department for next year. Okay, latest date. You don't have anything else on the budget? Does any commissioner, we, we, we've had the budget for several weeks now, and I think we at the point of where if any commissioner has any questions surrounding anything in the budget, now would be the time to make comments, for us to look at something, to re, the, the only question I have, I know in, when we were dealing with the police department, did, did we put funds in tier one for weapons?
Yes.
We did that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we put enough funds in there for fifty weapons that we need now.
How many?
How many, was it fifty? How many?
Fifty?
I don't, I don't know.
No.
Not a chief, it's not here, he's, his daughter's getting recognized for a significant award in Middletville, as, in nurses' school, so he is, I excused him from being here. If you say it's in tier one, that's all I need.
It's in tier one.
Okay, that's, that's all I need, because you know, the issue was that, they've, they've got weapons, it's six or seven, eight years old, and that didn't sound, I've got one I've had for forty years, but when, when you do it in line of duty, and when they go to the firing range, seven of them misfired, and so that has some concerns for me, but.
It was fifty, and they were four hundred dollars apiece.
Right.
And.
How many was it?
Fifty. They were fifty and at four hundred apiece, and.
But it is in tier one?
It is tier one, and they did have money in there for repairs, and that was part of the discussion, and I think they were still going to spend like about eight thousand dollars to buy spare parts and try to repair and fix, and instead, we went to the, starting to stage, if you would, a replenishment on an annual basis of fifty guns.
Right. Okay, does anybody else have any question, comments? Yes, sir.
I'm going to have a couple, one, just, just for the, just for the public. I know I've got it here, but we taking any money out of the, out of the reserve fund in this year's budget? And if so, how much?
It's budgeted in FY thirteen at eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and thirty-one thousand we're taking in, awesome. All right, the other comment was if, you know, I'm really for the two percent, I know we're, we're continuing forward with the bonus plan, but if we're going to write a bonus, why don't we just write it for five hundred and ninety-nine dollars apiece, and then we save ourselves an awful lot of money, because the government wouldn't require us to do a ten ninety-nine on anything under six hundred dollars. They don't require me and my business, do they require the county to do it?
You're still supposed to pay taxes on that, though. As the CPA on the board, I have to tell you, just because you don't have to file the, the, and it's, you're not supposed to file miscellaneous bonus compensation without running it through the W-2. I'm sorry. I can't help it, I mean, professionally, I would be wrong if I didn't tell you the, the legal answer on that.
Having that question answered for me, then that's, that's okay there. The, you know, I, I, I'm not going to go back into what we talked about one time before, how everybody's going to run it on a revenue-based budget, and now we're talking about taking more money out of the general fund just to balance the budget, and we're still not addressing the, we're not addressing the two percent increase. However, I'll let everybody make their own decisions based on that, but it's going to be hard for me to vote for a budget that doesn't have a two percent increase across the board for county employees, and I have no axe to grind on that. I just feel like that we're probably, at the end of the day, we may have to even look at the employees paying a little bit more on their insurance premium. We're already talking about getting in this program that's going to cost forty dollars apiece, and with their spouses, eighty, so now we're, you know, we're pushing a thousand dollars a year to put those people in a program, so I mean, there's some, you know, there's some issues there that, that would bother me certainly, but just wanted to go on the record, just on the, that part of it, I, while I don't think it's a really smart business move to dip into the fund balance, I would vote for that in an effort to, you know, to give that two percent raise. That's, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair, that's all I have to say.
Just for clarification, how much would two and a half percent cost, quickly?
I think I said two, I don't know one and a half percent.
Oh, two, I'm sorry.
I've said two every time, I've never said two and a half.
We're at fifty-eight, what are we at, fifty, if you go to the, your book, on the large sheet.
And we're taking eight hundred and seven thousand dollars out of the, out of the fund.
If you go to your notebook, if we go to this here, go to this.
Which exhibit is that?
That's a.
This is the handout.
Handout, it's a big spreadsheet, it's corrected for, for whatever, and if you go to the last page, third page three, under salaries, two thousand and fourteen, total salaries as budgeted are sixty-two million dollars. Again, just using a blanket two percent on that, we're looking at a, a million two forty, I guess.
But that would not be the, that would not be the, the gross.
That would be gross, and then you have approximately what I had before, you have the seven point six five, and the eight point eight oh, and the two point three seven, about nineteen percent you'd have to add on top of that. So taking the sixty-two million, sixty-two million times one point one nine.
If you round it up, it's probably a million and a half.
That, that would be the total amount, one point five million.
Yeah. So what you come up with, Fred, about a million and a half dollars?
Yeah, if you're, again, sixty-two times the point one nine, I think I said, you're adding another, calculator doesn't work, I'd probably do it in my head, ten, twenty, you're looking at twenty percent of that, hundred and, another hundred and thirty thousand dollars benefits.
So, so you're looking at like one point six?
One point four, probably about one point four.
One point four?
I rounded it, it was one four twenty-six or something like that.
Okay, we, we looking at one point five? I, I would be amenable to seriously considering.
Why are you looking at? Let's look at one other thing. Mr. Reddick has already stated that, you know, we're going to be, what, point eight percent, Tom, was that the number?
Four and eight four.
Four and eight four? What does that come to?
About four hundred and seventy grand.
Four hundred and seventy-three thousand?
I think I calculated, if you take the revenue for the taxes, I think it's fifty-six, fifty-six million dollars, and that times the point oh oh eight four, came out to four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So if you take that off the one point five million, we're back to one point one. I mean, you can pull numbers from out of the air from anywhere, okay? You know, numbers don't lie, you know, liar, you know, all that, I won't go into that, but anyway.
I, I, I would be, yes, sir?
I was going to say, can we get, can Reddick give us an estimate on where, where he think we're going to be next year in terms of, in terms of revenue?
Are we going to be next year?
Yes.
You're talking about fiscal budget twenty-fourteen?
Correct.
I would say that it's either going to be the same or just a tad higher, and it'd probably, next year, if you're looking at forecast, it would probably be point, zero point oh eight or, but anyway, your guess is good as mine. So, can we get that from Reddick, sir?
Can we get, get that from the tax assessor?
I will, I will tell you that.
Yes.
Having worked with him last year, and again, this year, he will wait till the last minute to give you a number, just to be on the safe side, so that it's not overstated and have to, you know, pull back, and again, he's now given us the, the point eight four, as he said, based on finally, I mean, he watches it as weeks go by, as they close out things, and finally gets to the end and says, this is what it is. Up till the eleventh of April, when we met last time, he was looking at a push, basically break even, and in the last couple of weeks, maybe the last month, came up to find that there is just a tad increase, so looking at next year, crystal ball, I'm sure he'd probably, I, I'll give him an opportunity to respond, but I think. probably, I'll give him an opportunity to respond, but I think, based on two years of history, he'd be hard pressed, he'll be hard pressed to probably pin him down or something.
Well, I'll let you know, I'm on board with the 2%, the 2% as well.
You on board?
I'm on board with the 2% increase.
2%, you on board? We got two, we got three?
Not 2%.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask, you know, we're kind of hitting around it, this add fund balance use to 3,016,000, is, are we actually using 3.8 million? Are we taking 3 million more plus the 830?
No, sir.
Total 3 million?
Yeah, I've taken it out over here, if you can see.
Right.
Okay, so, you're starting here with this figure, which had taken it out of the original.
Okay.
So, the only thing going in is the 3 million down at the bottom.
Okay.
I didn't want to net the two and then make it more confusing, I thought if I took it out, and I guess, maybe I was confusing that way, but it's gross 3 million dollars as opposed to trying to net numbers.
And I think we're close to figuring out the budget for this year, but I just, I wanna make sure we're clear for planning ahead, because I know next year, it's gonna be, you know, a lot of people are up for reelection, and it gets a little tougher, so we've gotta kind of make some hard decisions now, because the 3 million dollars that we're taking is basically the 1.8 million dollar insurance, and the 1.2, which is currently listed for the one-time bonus, that's the 3 million dollars that's coming out of the fund balance.
That's exactly what it is.
So, fast forwarding 12 months, and we're all sitting here together again, what have we changed that's gonna keep us, I mean, because we heard we got 500,000 coming potentially from the tax digest going up. I'm worried, because that fund balance only has so much, you know, you use those for rainy days, which by the way, I know we've come through a bad downturn, and I was asking for us to use it last year, so I mean, I understand that. But I just worry, we keep pulling on that fund balance, when do we hit the danger time? Is it next year? That we're...
Could I respond to that?
Right.
Next year, we're gonna have to get real serious about major medical one way or another. Obviously, if it continues to go up like it did this year, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16%, then obviously, we can't, we can't, the county, the taxpayer can't exolvent 1.9, 1.8 million. So, next year, that, that there has to be some serious talk about employees contributing something next year to bring that down. Having said that, there's been some comments that paying all of it now, we've got some employees that don't even get insurance, we've got some employees that have dependents and some doesn't, but this came down so quick and so fast, that it appears that we're gonna recommend that for this year, the board exolvent the total amount. Now, next year, there's got to be some significant concessions that we're gonna have to consider looking at the employees' premium and...
But, and that's exactly, you're hitting the point exactly, is what can we do now to help with that discussion for next year? And I just, you know, we had the consultant come in, the only way we can change behavior, and that's why I wanna make sure we're clear, this is not a price increase for our employees, as long as they take an active involvement with doing a health assessment, and a few other activities, just to, to kind of know where they stand with their health. I mean, if you did that, there's actually a zero cost increase from, from what we're proposing if we did the wellness plan. But if you don't, because I'm worried, is we go, fast forward a year, if we have another 1.8 million dollar insurance increase, we double whammy our employees, because now we're putting them on record that we're not giving you any more next year, but we didn't do anything to try to sti, you know, to slow down the rising increases, and they will go up, that we've really double whammied, because we didn't try to fix any of the behavior issues that are causing this to occur. So, I guess what I'm saying is, and last year, I made a big ruckus about the health insurance, because I mean, believe me, I mean, I came from the school board where I was paying 900 and something bucks a month, I come over here and family coverage is $42 a month, I had a little bit of sticker shock, I was like, holy cow, you can get family coverage for $42 a month? And I imagine most people, that's not normal. But I'm surprised to see with our losses, that we're not doing anything to try to change that behavior, and it wouldn't cost anything to the employees to make that happen. I did wanna, here's the things, I went through the budget, and I had some categories, you know, and Angie, I want to thank you first, you and Fred, I had a list of a bunch of things, but I think we've got it down to about two things that I need additional clarification on, is that, you know, and by the way, Terry, I told you at lunch today that I was gonna be asking about this, because I didn't mean anything, but I just truly did need clarification. In account 4020, the DOT construction, I know the, last year, the budget was 3,357,000, this year, it's 5,405,000, that's about a 2.1 million dollar increase. I know we had L-MIG money of about 1.4 that was coming in, you know, that was the part of the part that increased the revenue. I'm just trying to figure out how we spread that gap of the difference, that 600,000, the 6 to 700,000 dollars.
The reason for the increase is, in the past, our salaries for our resurfacing crews have been explosted, so this year, that's not the case, so those salaries were moved back into the DOT, and those salaries increased that amount, I believe about 741,000 dollars.
Terry, I mean, one of the questions I have is that, you know, I just watched in the media, the new, you know, and the school board just outsourced their, their cleaning crews, and, you know, and they saved the county about $2 million by doing that. Now, I also understand that it was a very controversial discussion, because it did have some impact. What, you know, I'm trying to figure out, because there is a tipping point with government, that with the rising benefit costs, the rising pension costs, that can the government continue to bear the weight of everything we've done all the years in the past? And I mean, we're kind of hitting that point with our budget, and Commissioner Bowman, you probably can tell me a little bit about what it costs to pave a road, you know, a mile of road, you too, Gary, because I know you've dealt with paving a lot, is, do we need to start getting creative with figuring out if there's alternative ways to pay for some of the fundamental things we have to do, like paving? You know, we have an engineer yourself on staff, but then we put it out to bid essentially to pave the roads, instead of us doing it internally, so we don't have to cover the insurance. I mean, I'm not talking about for this year, don't get me wrong, I'm just, like I said, I'm scared about next year, and I'm scared about the year after that, because we keep going on this path where I don't see a tremendous amount of change from the way we've done business in the past, and that scares the heck out of me, as a resident of Henry County, as a business owner here in Henry County, how do we bridge the future gap? Because we can make this thing balance this year, but I think that if we don't start thinking year two, year three, we're gonna be in a heck of a position, and, you know, and so much in politics is, just give it for the next guys, and that's not what we can do. I plan on working with these crew, these guys for several years, and we need to, we need to kind of come up with some answers, so do you have any thoughts on, I'm sure that's not the first time you've been asked that?
If you're talking about, have we looked at outsourcing the resurfacing? Last year, at, at the end of last year, we looked at the amount of asphalt we put down, and we broke it up into several categories, which is, I think, the fairer way to do it. My, kind of my global answer is this, we found that if we just put out our resurfacing strictly of roads, it would probably be more economical to bid that out. The problem comes in, is in patching, if we subbed out, bid out to patching, I think we'd get our clock cleaned.
Right.
Because that's your small amount that's here, there, and yonder, and then the other part where I think, where we make up that difference, or why we continue to do it in-house, is we have a lot of small projects that we do in-house, and I'll give you an example of one I just heard of today, behind elections, part of their parking lot tore up where the dumpster's at? It's probably an area, I don't know, maybe 30 by 50. If I contracted that out and got somebody to do it, their, I'm gonna call their mobilization to come do that small spot, and then move back out, it would probably cost us a lot. We'll work that thing in on a rainy day or something like that, as we come and buy, and I think we save the county money in those applications. Or for instance, like where we put in a pipe under a road, and we go back and patch that road, recently, say on Stagecoach, we replaced pipes there, it was in our resurfacing program, so when we come back and paved over that, I didn't have to pay a contractor to go out there and put down that one truckload of asphalt. So, it's, it's places like that, that I think that where we save the money.
Right.
It's kind of a balance, on those areas, we save some, we could probably get done on just the, just the road resurfacing, if we put it out, we would probably save money there, but I think we would lose it, if you will, in the patching in these small, what I'm gonna call patch jobs, pothole patching in these small repair jobs.
You could have almost a special service crew, because I know some municipalities keep a crew with an equipment to do potholes, exactly the type of things you're talking about, but if we, and believe me, Terry, this has nothing to do with the way you're running the department, it's just that the costs are starting to get outside of your control, like I said, with the health insurance, with pensions, with, you know, all the other, the liability insurance costs that we have to keep workers comp, I mean, I could go on and on, this is just the way we're getting to a situation where you start wondering if government's being priced out of being competitive in a lot of this. The other department that I wanted to get some attention, and I was glad to see, Mr. Cleveland was out in the audience, because I know we had a lot of discussions on this last year, and I saw your budget increase from 163, 830 last year, to 191, 244. Do you feel comfortable coming to, and talking to us about that increase?
Part of that is based on some numbers that were ran currently for our salary increase for myself, there's just two people in my department, and of course, we all know you can't predict death. Just to give you some numbers roughly, calendar year-wise, January 1 this year to March 31, we're up 19 compared to where we were last year. So, I feel like out of that, so far, I've done 72% of the work, so that's part of the increase. This other part of the increase is our medical examiner, Dr. Gerald Gallit, who performs our autopsies, he has asked for an increase on his services as well, because the number one, death right now, is prescription drugs, and we're having to get studies on the toxicology to determine exactly how much the person had in their system of what drug. So, those two things combined is what made the increase.
One of the questions I had, I know last year, we'd had several discussions on this, and one of the things that I can remember, me and a few other commissioners had given some guidance on, was you were short a staff person, you could go add a new part-time position, because, you know, Donald, you're very similar to the points I was just making with Terry, is that government's getting to the point where health insurance, pension, these things, you carry those costs too, and is, if we keep increasing your pay...
Let me, let me...
Okay.
Neither myself nor my deputy take any benefits here at the county, as far as insurance.
Okay, but you do get the pension, though?
Yes.
Okay, so you, so there are some benefits associated with it, that we do, that the county has a carry cost on?
Yes.
And they'll probably, as we've seen with, we had a whole nother discussion about the unfunded liability that's sitting out there with the pension, that's, that's the part that, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm sure you're aware, we voted last year that the county commissioners dropped our pay by 20%, because as we understood during hard times, you put your money where the mouth is, and you tell people, hey, I understand things are tough, as an elected official, I'm gonna do my part, because I'm doing this because it's a public service, and, and as an elected official, it troubles me to see an increase when we gave you guidance to go get a part-time person, to help you out, so that, and that's just me speaking, I'm sure all these other commissioners have their own opinions, but...
Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, but there never was somebody, y'all never did tell me to go hire somebody, y'all gave me that, and then you, and I chose to use it as an increase, and then y'all took it away from me. And correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I wasn't the only commissioner in that meeting, so...
But, regardless of the fact, the state law says I can do one or two things, I can either ask for a salary, or I can be paid per call, and if I'm paid per call, the county is not going to benefit from me being on a salary, because I will make more than what I'm asking for.
But doesn't that also exclude you from benefits at that point? Because you're almost like an independent contractor to a degree?
Yes. So, you know, I personally have to weigh that.
Right, and I can understand that, and that's one of those things, I think we also discussed, that might not be the worst thing for, if you would make more money, but I think it would free the county, because it's never been about you making money, it's about that tail that drags behind of the increased benefits to the county, because that pension scares the heck out of me for what it does to the county in the long term.
Well, and, and, and you know, I'm elected just as y'all are, and in four years, I may not be here, you never know. So, if you're worried about the pension at that point, as far as me, I'm just a little small fish in the sea.
Right. There's a bunch of us fish.
Yeah. And just to give you numbers, the highest year we've had so far has been 374, and if you take that and multiply it times 175, you're gonna get $65,000, and that's well underneath what I'm asking for. So, I look at it as I'm saving the county some money as well, and still not hiring anybody, I'm absorbing the work.
Anybody else have any question? Yes, sir.
I think my only issue with it, and I was on the board at the time, too, these, some of these other gentlemen were not, but I looked at it like, you know, you ran for it, you knew what it was when you ran, I know the numbers are up, but also, it's another issue, I mean, and having come off of being sick for a fairly long while myself, you know, if you hired somebody, it's, it's one thing, but if, but if something were to happen, and we never know, it's like when the doctor came in and gave me those three words, you've got cancer, I mean, if something came and did that, then we've got, your salary that we're dealing with, it's been increased now, there again, when you ran, you knew what the salary was, but now it's been increased, when my, my understanding was, that if it needed a, a part-time person, you know, that we, that we were more in line with a part-time, simply because if something were to happen to you, then we've gotta hire somebody to do what you're doing, and then we're still taking care of you to a certain degree, I'm not saying 100% the whole time.
But we already have somebody, though, already have an assistant.
Right, and it could happen to you, it can happen to anybody in this room at any time, so, I mean, that was, that was my understanding of the meeting, I'm a little perplexed by the fact that somebody said you could not hire a part-time person, because that was not what, and I don't know at liberty how much I can discuss about that, but at the end of the day, that's not what was discussed when I was in the meeting. When I was in the meeting, you had somebody, they had a heart attack somehow, I don't remember the details, but something happened, and you could at that, you know, you could at that point replace that person or have a part-time person, that was, and I just wanted to clear it up from my understanding of what happened, so, I mean, I, there again, I, it's kind of, you know, I know what we do when we're running, we know what we're in for, but, you know, when we ran, it was, it was two days a month, it's far more than two days a month for us, and I mean, we do a lot of miles and traveling that are not reimbursed, not asking for it to be reimbursed, because I knew what it was when I ran, but at the end of the day, actually, I just told a little bit, I did not know exactly what it was when I ran, but I do now, but I mean, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we're at a lot, you know, so, I just wanted to clear that up, but, but, you know, at, at the end of the day, you know, there'll be another election coming up, and that's the time to, that's the time, I think, entertain whatever that might be, and if it means that you need to charge per visit, you know, that's, that might be what you need to do, you know, just being honest with it, it's the same thing that I said when we were in the back room, so, I appreciate it, but that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else have any question? Thank you. Just, just to get it out to the public, I know that when we started the budget process, when we was dealing with the police department, one of the things that I first observed was they had the school crossing guards down, and they had it, had it down as a source of revenue, and we went there for the longest, and I thought it was a source of revenue, and then I found out that it's not a source of revenue, so consequently, I suggested that we take it out, because even though it looks like a source of revenue... a source of revenue, it's uncollectible. Now, I don't know who's supposed to pay who, and I don't think we've ironed that out, but I did make an inquiry to the school board, and they indicated that that's, that's a county responsibility for safety and all that, but that's about 440, some odd thousand dollars a year. That may be something we might want to address next year to answer Commissioner Preston's looking at the future. Another item, would one of y'all be kind enough to brief the board about the 2.5% that we can legally collect, and who gets that? And I will share my findings.
Angie has a schedule for it, but we don't have that with us right now. We'll try to grab that. I can run to my office and grab it. I think I can find it. Is that on computers?
So are we talking about funding? All the shortfalls with, through the school board?
Yeah, well, not, it may not be shortfalls.
Because I can tell you, as a parent, I don't know if the safety of one child is worth $400,000. You have one child, I mean, we've had children hit by school buses. That is a shaky, shaky ground, I think, to take away, because crossing guards, and then, I don't know, education, that's our future. And I think if we start taking money from that, with the school system that's already at the bottom of how efficient, meaning they're more cost-effective than all but five other school systems in the entire state on their cost of administration, that's kind of scary.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
On those lines, if you don't mind, does the school board pay the sheriff for resource officers? And that's a safety issue, too.
Yes, sir. They refund the sheriff.
So they, so they pay for one, that's also a safety issue, but they don't pay for the other? They expect...
People in the county in schools...
I mean, I got grandkids in school, okay? But what about people that don't have kids in school? I mean, they're, they're, they're to, they're already paying 23.6 plus or minus percent. I mean, mils, not percent.
Oh, I definitely think in the long term, I want to get that mileage down, too. I just decided we'd hold off on that discussion today.
Well, I mean, if you brought it up after, Mr., the chair brought it up, so I just was just looking for clarification. I mean, if you're, you know, we're struggling on 14.05, and running the entire unincorporated area, and the school board's getting 23.6 plus or minus, and been getting that, they were getting that when times were really good, too. So, I mean, there's, I mean, if they're paying the sheriff, it's the same thing. I mean, if they're paying the sheriff for safety with the kids in the school system, then, you know, that's in the sheriff's budget. I'm kind of concerned about why the county would be expected to, to carry all these costs, you know? And it's so easy to always, everybody's, it's always, I want safety for my, you know, I got six grandkids in school, okay? I want safety for them, too. But, you know, I want fairness across the board also. So, I mean, you know, if it's gonna be one, if it's good for one, it should be good for everybody. That's, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was curious as to whether they were paying the sheriff department.
I think on the school crossing, obviously, we're gonna do nothing this year, and that would be opened up for discussion next year. I know that one of the things that we mentioned, obviously, would be the safety factor. The second thing would be, Henry County Reg Department uses their gems, and they, they don't charge us anything. So if it's a, if it's a swap, then it's a swap. Now, on the 2.5% collected, I think this board needs to do one or two things. One is, if we're gonna share this amount, we need to adopt a resolution as a board to approve the disbursement. Right now, I cannot find any resolution, any motion, any documentation as to how or why the board, the BOE gets this amount. So if the board sees fit, then do a resolution, and then it would make it legal, so to speak. So if you know something that I don't know, then that would...
I can give you a little light that I was on the school board back then, and Chairman Jason Harper, we had multiple, and that's one of the things, I think, because we're all family. I think the school board's family, Board of Commissioners, and I hate the tone that we go where we're, it's us versus them, because truthfully, we're all citizens of Henry County, and we're all in this together. I mean, we want our school board to be as successful with our children as possible. So I would encourage us to do, we used to have intergovernmental meetings with the school board. You know, we don't have to do them every quarter like we used to, but we've got some, obviously, pretty big issues facing us with these school crossing guards, plus also just trying to figure out this, this, this collection rate where the school board can help pay for the tax assessor's office. But instead of us just kind of telling them when and where and how, I'd like us to open up a dialogue with them, since we are all in this together, that one Henry concept, and really kind of put it out there and let them have a chance to discuss it as well. But it was, I don't remember if they made a formal resolution, I would think they had to, but they had multiple meetings, and that was on the agenda for probably a year and a half before, you know, Latonya, were you on the, were you, do you remember a part of that?
No, I wasn't a part, I was here, but I wasn't attending those meetings at that time, Commissioner Preston.
Okay. Because there were, you know, like I said, I can't tell you the actual resolution number, but there was some formal things that were going on with the dialogue between the school board and the Board of Commissioners at the time.
What you have before you is the FY 11, FY 12. The school board M&amp;O and bond collection is, digests 118 million, 110 million. 2.5% is at 2.968 and 2771. The budgets of the two departments, total budget, 65% is 2,505 and 2,404. The difference between the 2.5 and the 65% is 459 and 349,000 for those two years.
120,000.
So that's, that's the figure there. And 13 is not completed yet, so don't have those figures yet.
Well, as y'all know, I sent an email out. It was my intent to send a letter to the school board indicating that we wouldn't pay that this year. And I still feel strongly to do that, and I know it might be some consequences. But if the board wants to do something, intergovernmental agreement or something, because as I understand it, if we just merely give it to them even with resolution, it's a gratuity. And I don't know, I think if we're gonna give a gratuity, it has to be, even though it might be a token, it has to be something intangible to do that. So regardless how we got there, we're at the point now that where, Madam Clerk, I asked her if she would purge her records to see if she found any legal documents, and as of right now, with the nod of the head, I don't think she has found any. Okay, so I'm...
Have we reached out to the school board attorney?
To see if they have anything, since those were joint meetings that we had with the school board. Have we reached out to their, their, their school board attorney to see if they have any meetings?
No, but we can do that if, okay. So what we'll do is, before we continue this, before I would send a letter, we'll let legal counsel contact the school board and see whether or not they have documentation. Thank you. Thank you for it, Angie. Does anybody else have any counsel?
If I could just clarify something, I scratch this out if you can read my chicken scratching here. What I'm showing you here is the salary budget for this year is 62009, 245. The 2% would be 1,240, 185. The three items of benefit that I had in the previous schedule was 1882. I rounded to 19, just slightly more. That 1240 times 119% is 1,475. The budget right now has 1,251 in it. Budget would be increased by 224,000. Just one last computation, that is the average employee wage, taking the 62 million that's in the budget, and the 1,543 employees that that represents, and you just do a simple division, the average employee wage is over 40, just slightly over $40,000. At 2%, that's $804. The bonus calculation that I used to get to the number that's in there was 740 is a one-time payment of 714. You can see that on average, the difference is $90. Now, what you're gonna have is for those under the 40 and those over the 40, which, you know, makes some sense that everybody gets the same versus some over and under getting 2% of a higher figure versus 2% of a much lower figure, let's say. Somebody making 25 grand would only get 500 bucks. Somebody at a higher figure would get more. So the bonus figure, if you would, is a straight figure for everybody. The 2% is based on their salary, as I said. Incrementally, what you're looking at is at $90, but incrementally to the budget, you'd go from 1,251 to 1,475. Some other discussion you had regarding the fund balance and the salaries and bonus and so on and so forth. If the intent is to provide a bonus, one-time payment, if you would, this year, but not knowing if next year you will do it again, based on the numbers, where we may or may not be, by putting it into a 2% salary, you're guaranteeing next year, if revenues don't go up, you will have to use $3 million more fund balance, just the same as you did this year. Likewise, anyways, I'll just, because this year, initially, as a bonus, one-time bonus, again, not saying you wouldn't do it again next year and year after, that 1.2 or whatever would fall off, and would come out of fund balance to reduce next year's fund balance needs still at 1,800,000. Having said that, if we're at 31 million, as I showed you previously at the end of last year, and let's say that we, this year can break even again and still be at 31 million dollars, in two years, use of 3 million dollars would take it down to 25 million. If your budget is 122 million, if the standard is 25% for bond ratings, if you want to be concerned about that, 120 million dollars at 25 is 30 million dollars. So the 31 is slightly ahead of the 30 million 25% figure, and then next year, when you go to 28 million, using 3 million, you'll be below it in the year next after that, provided revenues don't, if revenues do grow up, you take care of it, your fund balance use may be less, but you, if not, you will be at a $25 million fund balance if nothing else changes, expenses and so on. And again, if you don't do anything for the employees, and I have to say this, if you don't do anything for employees this year, and you don't do anything for them next year, I have to tell you, the employees would be seven years without an increase. So keep that in mind as well.
Let me ask you this. Out of the $804, the, 2% on average, how much would an employee that made exactly 40,187, 2%, 804, how much would that employee net from that 804?
Well, in the 714, which I showed you before federal income tax, which at this point is, depends on the, you know, how many dependents they have, single, married, and whatever. At the 714, I believe the figure was 583 or something like that?
573.
573. So add 90 bucks and take, take 6, 12, about 20% off of the 90, another 8, so that you'd get about 18, so you'd get about $72 added to that figure. So it's about $650, I guess.
Okay, so they would be netting $650 instead of 573.
Right, prior to federal taxes.
One of the issues that we discussed was just exactly what you said. The reason we discuss a bonus is in lieu of a raise, because next year, depending upon where the budget was, we could be more in line giving another bonus instead of giving a 2%. That way, if we gave a percentage, and we cost 1.5 million this year, then to do the same next year, it'd be more than that, because we gotta find the, the original 1.5 plus a little more than that. So that's, that was, but anyway, we got all this on the table to discuss it.
Chris, what's it for you?
Yes, sir.
The additional revenues from the school board, and say if we have another increase from the tax assessments, would that be enough to cover the 2% increase next year?
Again, 2%, if you, if you look at 2%, just equal a million and a half and keep it at that figure, you know, on 56 million in revenue collections this year, you know, every 1% is 560,000. So if you take the 560 and the 400, let's call it, you're close to a million dollars there, so you got about 2/3 of the figure picked up at that point, yes.
I mean, we're starting to see a lot of new construction in the county, and there's some new businesses coming into the county, so I'm assuming our digest is gonna be a lot higher next year than it is this year.
It, we've got a couple of buildings, I know, the big, big buildings that have been put in, provided they don't have any tax abatements this year or next year, or it reduces, if you would, at least there's something each year. There would be some taxes collected on those, those bigger buildings that are out there, and new buildings that are being built. I've seen some commercial buildings being built on 20 in some other locations, and we're seeing a bigger increase in permits for housing. So yes, there is, there is that construction going on. And hopefully, hopefully, what I've heard in the news, I think a week or so ago, stock market was struggling with the home, home statistics, new home statistics, and they were talking about the problem is that the construction costs are going up because of material cost, which quite frankly, is, in my sight, a good news, because everybody's houses have seen a 40% reduction as we start building houses, and this has been a thing I was hoping years ago would happen, is as we start seeing newer construction, and the cost of the materials are what they are, and the houses are starting to sell for what they should sell for, the houses that are on the ground are ready, should see those increases.
So if we, so if we look at recapturing the revenue that we're losing, and we see property values increase, there's a good chance we may not have to look at fund balance next year, correct?
There's, there's all kinds of possibilities, yes. I mean, sales tax could go up if there's more retail, and there's a lot of other things that go with it. But at this point, it's a matter of, you know, hoping, praying next year that we don't have a recession in the middle of all this, too. So my crystal ball isn't that good, but those, those prospects of what you're seeing are definitely there.
I see construction going on all over the county. And from a personal experience, the tax assessor had my house valued at about half of what I actually had, and the one that I just recently sold, it's like 260 plus or minus $1,000, maybe 270, don't remember exactly, but I sold it on a cash sale for 325,000. And I see those numbers starting to climb. Also, like you said, that, you know, there's, the absorption rate in Henry County when times were good was over 4,000 houses a year. We probably don't have 1,500 houses for sale in Henry County right now, if you get, get them to pull the numbers. So they're starting to climb. The permits, like you said, but I mean, I see houses going up everywhere I go, and houses are not, that's not gonna be the, you know, the end-all, but what they're gonna do is they're gonna raise the value of the others as they come along. The biggest thing we need is the commercial side, the commercial development, to really help us along. But, you know, we, 0.84%, I mean, 400-plus thousand dollars, I, I see things on the rise also. So, I mean, I, that's why I don't have an issue with dipping in for that 2%. And that 2% means that they get a bonus this year, but they also get a bonus next year, if you use that same mentality, that it's a one-time deal. Because right now, the 2% is a one-time deal, it's good for one year, and, you know, it stays there, obviously, but that means they get a bonus next year. I mean, you know, we're gonna have to look at increasing insurance rates and some other things that our employees pay, but I mean, I don't, I don't want to do that and then turn right around, you know, give them a 2% and then take 10% away from them. So, I mean, we've got to start moving somewhere. And that's, that's mine, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have any question?
Yes, I got a comment, Tommy. You know, we talked about the 1.8 to take care of insurance, and just to clarify something, I do support the 2% increase for our employees. I think that's a way for them to get a raise, and it's actually gonna help them in their retirement in the years to come versus just a bonus. Just for clarification, when you talk about the 1.8, and we're talking about just insurance, I look at that as a benefit to our employees. And right now, we got 166 employees that don't even have insurance for the county, that works for the county. So that wouldn't even be a benefit for those employees. If you had single coverage, it'd be $49.10 a month increase. And when you look at a family, then it's $158.12. So I want to make sure I do support the 2% or 2.5% or whatever we can do, but I would like to make sure we equally share that amongst all our employees. Just a comment.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Fred, Andrew, do you have any comment?
I was, I'm waiting to see if I can get it. I was, you were talking about number of houses being built and everything else. I've got a little graph that I had that shows foreclosures. If I get it here in just a second, I'll show it to you, but it shows three years of foreclosures, and the graph is rather alarming, rather good, not alarming, but we'll show. So if Connie can find it on my desk, I'll have it. If not, if we close before then, I'll just get it to you later. I'll have it. If not, if we close before then, I'll just get it to you later.
As long as I use this first figure, everybody gets two, and that would be the figure, even if that was less than all the employees. So that would be the increase that would everybody get in two percent. The only thing here is it could be less. Not everybody here gets it, so it still works out the same way.
Can I run, say, if everybody's getting one?
Oh, with a million, I do want, okay.
Do we know where this graph is, or is that what?
No, you don't need to wait for it. If it gets here, fine. I don't wanna hold you up for it. I just, if there were other, was other business to cover before, uh, to cover it. Uh, Angie just wants me to make, clarify here that on the million two fifty-one that's in the budget, um, the, that figure was based on fourteen hundred and seventy-five employees, eliminating from the fifteen hundred and forty-three employees in the budget that were part-time. And I believe also you were eliminating those people that were on supplement. So in that particular case, there were fourteen hundred and seventy-five people.
And also elected officials.
Okay, elected officials as well?
Yes.
And, and so on. And, and whoever else. But I'm just saying, the, the gross number of employees per year scheduled is fifteen hundred and forty-three. The bonus was based on a lesser number. The two percent, and I just calculated it and depends if you want to, again, not give two percent to the same people or whatever, that sixty-two million total salary would be less. So the worst case is, the number would be less. And when I said it was two twenty-four, it'd be less as well. I gave you worst case scenario based on a gross number, just doing simple calculations.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, question? If not, somebody move the adjourn?
Move.
Motion to adjourn, uh, just before, I have a second from District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, Chair recognizes, uh, the six and zero vote, meeting's adjourned.